Public service announcement, make sure you have your phones turned on silent. All do fine, those that go on. Alright, if everybody would join me for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Opening up the meeting, we have two public hearings. One, one public hearing.
We have four next time.
Four next time, thank you.
Public hearing number one, Village Homer will hold a public hearing October fourteenth, twenty twenty five. To officially reaffirm its commitment to deed the L W S C C to Center for the Arms.
Anybody that want to speak on that? Going once, going twice, we've been open about this. We still aren't intending to do it, alright. Nothing heard? Make a motion to close the public hearing on the Little White Church deed.
I'll say it.
Well, John just came in, John, did you want to talk about the Little White Church at all?
No, I only have one question about um process. As as a public hearing, where do you add for times?
Uh, Corland Standard.
Okay, I was, I kept looking for something, but I couldn't find anything.
The paper, right, yeah. Has to be published at least a week from.
Yeah, um. I was surprised I didn't see it in the last page, Village Facebook, the Homer News.
The Homer News is not our uh thing of record, so.
Is that gold thrown into it?
I see, I don't know, I don't know. I don't know, would you think that he would still like to know?
Yes, they would like to know, John will look at it, but it costs money, okay? And so the Corland Standard is our public, is our.
No, I understand, it's the newspaper of record.
Right, and Dan, was this online?
Yeah.
It was on website.
Yeah, so. You just have to understand, sometimes our news is gonna cross and it might not hit, and then people are expecting it and it won't hit. And then we get yelled at for that. Alright, so we're following above and beyond, I will look at next time, maybe going into the Homer News to add those things that.
Maybe agenda, the proposed agenda would be good in Homer News.
So, well, that's a separate issue, but thanks, John, hey, alright. Moving on, anything else, Dan, on that? I had a motion to close the public.
Or I'll make the motion that we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright. Uh, what do we have next? Prove the consent agenda.
What the motion that we approve the consent agenda?
Uh, I did, I did ask that we pull the relief request for sewer charges on pool fill. That was the last one, I want Maureen to do more investigation on that. It is not straightforward. I would accept a motion to accept the consent agenda. Minus that last request.
We'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda. Minus the request for sewer charges, the last request.
All sergeant.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, motion to approve the minutes.
Move that we approve the minutes from nine twenty three twenty twenty five as submitted.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Aye. And I'm gonna motion to pay the bills.
Make a motion that we authorize the human under bills from the A Fund Vouchers number seven seven three through eight six three, the amount of one hundred thirty four thousand nine hundred twenty three dollars and seventy three cents. From the F and G Fund vouchers number two two eight through two five two, in the amount of twenty six thousand and thirty dollars and eighty nine cents. And from the T and A Fund vouchers twenty one and twenty two, in the amount of seventeen thousand nine hundred three dollars and seventy one cents.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Uh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and the opposed, none heard, carried. Privilege of the floor.
Mayor, if I may?
Oh, yes, absolutely, Reid.
Meeting, uh, mayor, board members, could be here, couple of updates from me from county activities, I'll keep brief. Lots of approving of the yearly and bi- uh, biannual contracts, uh, it's that time of the year where all of those are up for renewal, so that's kind of primary focus of a lot of committee activity for this month. Also, we are excited that Michael Ponacello, our new county administrator, has begun his work as of October sixth. He is on the job. I have gotten to know him even better the past few weeks, and we are all, I think I speak for everybody on the legislature, but we can say we're very excited about the experience that he brings, uh, and we're very optimistic about about what lies ahead for us. Um, he had a, he had a meeting break the other day, I did see, I saw the mayor there, uh, several other individuals uh from across Cortland County, uh, were there to get to know Michael, so we're very excited to have him. Lastly, uh, budget season is upon us. Um, I have nothing to say at this time about the budget, only that I will be keeping in uh very close contact with all of you as board members and with Mayor Plune as things are, as things come to to Pumwood White. Um, and doing what is best and supporting the best that we can for the village of all of us.
Thanks, Reid. Uh, anybody else for public, uh, privilege of the floor? Done?
Me?
Yeah.
I just think you guys misspeak.
Oh, okay.
It's why you sat in the front.
Alrighty, uh, there's nobody else from privilege of the floor. Uh, I don't have anything under old business. Under new business, approve the C D V G housing application. This is a great program. I don't see any issues with approving this.
Should be the last application of the program.
That says.
I'll make a motion, we accept the uh application.
Can I have a second?
I have a second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and the opposed, none heard, motion carried. Approve surplus equipment and materials ready for auction. You see, we have items from the police department, D P W, water department, and fire department.
Make a motion that we approve the surplus equipment and materials ready for auctions, lists that have been provided.
Can I have a second?
Second, Ben.
Second, discussion?
I've been impressed that we've got the uh border explorer for over five years. Held up.
Yeah, don't know if it held up, Chief say, argue that. Alright, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and the opposed, none heard, motion carried. November, discuss approved November board trustees meeting schedule, we have uh, one scheduled for the eleventh, what is, which is better instead? Do we want to continue to have the board meeting on Veterans Day, or do we just want to move to have one board meeting, which would be the twenty fifth? Score a point. Okay, if we do one board meeting on the twenty fifth, we would need to authorize a second check run. But that's uh for our.
We could always throw an emergency if we need to, something comes up.
Okay. Uh, any other comments, thoughts?
Is there any conflicts with, or the, does that impact like the budget schedule at all by not having a meeting that week?
No. Our budget schedule, which I handed out is uh, we, matter of fact, we've got uh, no, it doesn't impact this.
Okay, I I'm I'm fine, just doing one.
Okay.
It'll be here that week.
Alright. Uh, so I'd accept a motion that we revise the uh, November Board of Trustees meeting to only having the one on the twenty fifth.
I will make a motion that our, for November, our trustee meeting schedule will only be on November twenty fifth, not on November eleventh.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second, and and discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, with that, I make, I need a motion that we authorize a second check run for the office staff.
The motion that we authorize a second checks run for no, the month of November for the office staff.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
There you go.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, back over to Dan for public hearing dates.
For those three items, uh, ten twenty eight twenty five, local law one, village code book codification, local law two, changing the official year of village. That's the official start year, not the fiscal year, and then the franchise agreement, pre inspection northeast O L C and the village.
Okay, so on the next board meeting, those would be our uh, public hearings. Part of it is for the village code book, which we have been working on, it's a work in progress. The second one is the changing the official year, once we move to a November election. Uh, this would keep us in line with other municipalities in the state and federal government by having the start date being in January. And then the last one is the franchise agreement, which uh we have to have the, the reason it has to be postponed till the twenty eighth is because we couldn't get a public hearing out in the timely manner that was required by the communications, uh. So, that is why. Alright, I will accept a motion to approve the public hearing dates for those three items.
I'll make a motion that the local law one, village code book codification, local law two, changing the official year of the village, and three, franchise agreement with uh Spectrum Northeast. They help in weeks.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For the board, the new people here, the franchise agreement with Spectrum. It's by percent, and we've been for years and years, we, you know, it's gone down. It's about fifty five thousand dollars, that's used for tax money. I've been part of the cable commission, even though we don't do anything anymore, even though we used to meet for everything, now all other villages. So, I've got all the files, stuff, so it's, it's what it's been, so, no change really. For your improvement.
Alright, bit of sad news here, uh, Maureen is retiring, so she has submitted her letter of resignation.
Sad.
Make a motion that we accept Maureen's letter of resignation, regretfully, and really do commend her for all of the work that she's given us in the village during the past five years, while she's been here, there have been a lot of times where she has had to handle far more than just her position, and she has done so gracefully and cheerfully, and really kept things running smoothly, and for many people, she's the face of the village when they come in to see us, and I couldn't appreciate her more.
Brilliant, can I get a second?
I will second, sadly second, for Maureen that's listening, that's up.
Uh, yeah, she'll hear this, this discussion, so she's gonna.
We are very sad, you are, you are leaving it for.
She's gonna hear this when she does the minutes, yeah, she's great. Alright, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next up, uh, I need to call an audible with civil service to allow us to be able to start advertising to build a position, we need to create a temporary clerk position. So I would like a motion to create a temporary clerk position uh, to backfill our clerk who was resigning.
I make a motion that we uh, prove a temporary clerk position.
Can I have a second?
I'm second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Dan and Maureen, please remind me, we need to get that over to civil service. Next is, we have the police department report. Uh, Chief, is there anything you want to add to the police department report as written?
No.
Okay. Look to have a motion to accept the police department report as written?
I'll make a motion that we accept the police department as written.
Yeah, I'll second that, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, all approved. Uh, alright, so we have had concerns about speed on two eighty one, and Chief Pittman uh submitted a request that would allow us to reduce the speed limit on two eighty one, is that accurate, Chief?
Yes.
Alright, uh, we got the memo back from the state D O T, which denied the request. Uh, they say that the current speed limit of thirty five on two eighty one, past the school and such, is uh that eighty five percent of the drivers travel at or below that speed limit, and that is the percentile at which the free flowing conditions is used to set the speed for a uh, a safe speed. Anything to add to that, Chief?
No, it's other than I'll disagree with their findings and I'd love to give their number to the residents to call and complain.
So.
That fifteen out of a hundred, they're probably going significantly more than thirty five, maybe fifty or something.
So.
That would raise tackles for.
For our residents, we hear you, we are trying. Um, Chief did a great job, I'm trying to get this forwarded uh through them, but they have kicked it back as essentially denied.
One thing, um, I will say. Petition was recommend, recommended, petition the residents, as well as maybe the board writing a letter.
Okay, so, alright, so hope is not lost.
True.
In the meantime, you guys just need to patrol more there, I guess.
Yeah.
The only other.
So we will, we will move forward on that. Alright. So that was just an information, okay? Next item, item. Uh, I is that we can stop calling it the linear park now. Right, back when we were doing the linear park, uh, which started back in twenty twelve, twenty twelve, twenty thirteen.
I know when one came in.
Yeah, it's been a while.
It's no longer, yeah.
And so, uh, we went through a lot of hoops and we were at the last, the one yard, let's use a football terminology, since it's football season. And we were coming up short, and we had some angel contributors come in and contributed money, which got us over the goal line. Uh, with that, they earned naming rights to the linear park. So, for getting us across the line, and for getting us this lovely park, it will be known as the Hodge Riverwalk Park. They will provide their own sign, and we can now go on to phase two, which is design and actual construction of the vacant piece of land now. So for everybody that knows, yes, it's improved from what it was, it's not gonna stay totally blank now that we have gotten that grant fulfilled and reimbursed by the state.
Ooh, did get the money.
Yes, we got the money.
Great.
So we can now move forward with phase two, which is uh, design. So, more to follow on that, but it is now known as Hodge Riverwalk Park. Okay, alright.
Thank you too.
Who's the, uh, Jason and Neb Hodge of Hodge Realty?
Thank you to them for helping us move it across the finish line.
Yes, absolutely. Maybe we'll, maybe we'll do a ribbon cutting in the spring when the weather's a little bit nicer.
Yeah.
Okay, so that is a discussion point. Next, uh, as I'm sure everybody has heard about uh, the sales tax agreement change, which is causing ripple down effects through every municipality, and we are no exception. We need to probably look at doing a tax cap override. Again, it's a precautionary thing, we are still just starting our process for the budget. However, we need to look at, we don't need to decide right now, but we need to look at uh authorizing us to override the two percent tax cap, probably at the next meeting or the one thereafter. I'm putting it out here now, because if you read the paper, Virgil already did theirs. I believe Cortlandville.
Already saw theirs.
Already did theirs.
Okay.
Uh, the town Homer did theirs.
I want to do that soon as later.
And we'll want to do that sooner rather than later, okay, again, it's precautionary measure, but I'm gonna be frank. This sales tax ripple down effect is significant to our budgets.
Huge.
Alright, uh, so I don't, and we'll see, alright.
Want to share with them what the Mike Park said their increases?
My, my talk with Mike today, Mike sends his regrets, he couldn't be here tonight, he wasn't feeling great. Uh, but I think the residual after everything that they did, it's an eight percent increase. They, they went through it very, very stringently, and he thinks he got it down to about an eight percent. As their draft.
I remember it was forty four.
Yeah, it was a.
Which is shocking.
Saw their draft budget at their reading last week.
It's a major cost, so.
So, it's.
And can you, what is the, what's the general amount that we're trying to backfill, just so that people that I know know the it's not like we're trying to fill like a twenty thousand dollar.
Oh.
It was something like eight, wasn't it, seven or eight hundred thousand dollars?
I'd have to go back, I don't have that number off the top of my head.
Not exact, but.
It's at least two hundred K.
Yeah.
So significant.
Exactly, yeah. So, one of my frustrations with the county was that they seem to be looking for ways to grab more money from the municipalities before they did a hard look at their own budget to see what could they do to rein in spending and get rid of waste.
The plan is to take even more, in future years.
I don't want us to follow the county's example, I want us to look and see what we can do to spend as we're looking at our budget, but realistically, even if we keep things flat where they are or make cuts, we still probably are going to wind up doing this override, and it's very frustrating.
People who have a living wage. They know everything, trucks cost, as Mike Park said, three years ago, we bought a truck for a hundred and seventy thousand. This year, we just paid three fifty. You need a truck, or otherwise you can't go, so there are costs that you can't cut, you need a truck. And there it is, there's one seventy to three forty.
Our health insurance, our health insurance went up eighteen percent this year.
Yeah.
Uh, last year, our waste management went up five percent, I am not anticipating that going less this year. Uh, of course, we're looking at our employees are our number one factor, and uh, I am looking at a cost of living increase for them, and that's about two point seven percent. Um, there's other things that as we get them in, we are factoring in, which Mary Ellen has been doing to keep a running tally. Uh, so, we have our work cut out for us, our department heads have their work cut out for us. Uh, the department heads just turned in their five year uh plans, their one to five year plans. Uh, since Andrew's here, I'm gonna uh, single him out as an except, uh exemplary one to five year plan. Um, I don't know if we'll get to everything, but it's, it's.
You said asked.
Yeah, I did, I did, and you delivered, so, uh. So, and then tomorrow, our department heads will get their draft budget worksheets uh to start working on that. Yeah, so we talked about the tax cap limit override, does anybody else have any questions on that? We'll probably add that to the twenty eighth October. Unless you guys need more time, but I don't think we need to, and we should probably get it.
We gotta do it, yeah.
So Dan, please add that to the twenty eighth October agenda. Need to pass two resolutions.
Resolution to schedule a public hearing regarding the village of Homer intent to black community development block grant funding for in Water Works Water Tank. Whereas the village of Homer intends to submit an application to New York State Department of Parks to renew for funding in the community development block grant program to the twenty twenty five program year. And whereas the state of New York has announced that up to twenty four point two million is available through the twenty twenty five C D V G program with up to twenty million specifically available for public infrastructure projects. And whereas the elder homes consider submitting applications for up to two million in C D V G funds to support the public infrastructure improvement mentioned above. And whereas as part of the application process, the village of Homer must hold a public hearing to gather input from citizens, both the agencies and other stakeholders on rural C D V G application, community needs, and C D V G funding priorities. Now therefore, be resolved that the village of Homer board trustees are by schedule of a public hearing to be held on October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, or the registered move board trustees meeting. Receive public comments of the village of Homer's pro C D V G application, the public infrastructure improvements mentioned above, and be a further resolved, the village clerk will publish notice to set public hearing in accordance with applicable laws and regulations.
That's number four, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we uh put the resolution before a public hearing weeks.
I have a second.
All discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Gotta have that tank.
Resolution to implement a climate smart community task force and appoint a climate smart community coordinator. Whereas the village of Homer adopted the New York State Climate Smart Communities pledge by resolution on five nine twenty eighteen. Whereas the village wishes to obtain certification of the climate smart communities program by taking productive steps toward reducing greenhouse gas emissions and adapting to climate change, and whereas the climate smart community task force serves as a central body of leadership that promotes and supports climate change mitigation and adaptation strategies within the community. It will act as an advisory group to the municipality on any community issues related to climate change. And whereas the C C S C task force will meet at least twice a year and maintain meeting minutes and attendance records for each meeting, and whereas the C C task force will consist of community members, municipal representatives, and other relevant stakeholders, and whereas the C S C coordinator is responsible for convening, managing task force chair, serving as liaison between the C S C task force and the chief executive officer and other officials, and interfacing with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation on the C S C program as needed. Therefore, it is hereby resolved, climate smart community task force be initiated with the initial membership listed below, and be a further resolved if the village of Homer appoints Warren Bennett, Homer Environmental Club Officer, as the climate smart community coordinator. You did this, it's a five year uh setup, when you uh, do the resolution and put the task force together. Um, we're at our five years, so we have to re, this is a reestablishment of that task force. And in keeping our climate smart Ron status, so.
I'll make a motion that we uh, add this resolution for climate smart community task force uh in two weeks that are made.
Second?
I'm second.
Uh, discussion, Liz, do you willingly uh?
I I'm willingly uh serving as their municipal representative, and I just want to mention that um, it's really uh impressive that many of the folks, many of the people who are members of this committee are students. So the, the environmental club officer is a high school student, and so I wanted to kind of highlight just how engaged our students are in the community, and we appreciate their, their volunteerism.
And that was a bronze.
Yeah.
Shenequa trying to get into silver now.
Shenequa and Matthew were part of the original crew, and it's nice to see them back.
There's no tap.
Yep.
Supposedly, because of your bronze, silver, gold, as the fires erupt there go, it's, the better your odds to get some grants.
Yes.
That involves that.
Yeah.
So if you didn't have bronze, you, you'd be at a bigger disadvantage versus us.
Yes.
For projects.
This is helping.
I don't know. Given our bunch of issues, what kind of projects we can undertake, so, but then again, maybe in four or five years, something happens, so, we don't know, so let's, let's go for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got a motion, we got a second, we discussed, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, none heard, motion carried. Alright. Comments by attorney?
Yeah, and just a couple of things, one, um, the board remembers Jerry King, I think it was last four.
Yes.
Attorney. Uh, he probably provided me with an agreement, looks okay to me, I think you and I talked about it a little bit. But that's for the future, wait to the next meeting to figure out what you want to do, just think about it. Maybe we can, um, I can get the agreement over to all the board members, um, so that they can look at it and think, well, yeah, make a decision. So I'll do that, um, we have to go into executive session on two matters. One is discussing negotiations on a legal agreement, and two, um, labor negotiations. So we'll go into executive session, and then uh, when we come out of executive session, I don't think there'll be any action. We'll adjourn, and then we have to go into two matters after adjournment of uh, attorney client privilege. That should be it.
Thanks, Frank. Um, comments by board members?
And.
We've been forward to our Zoom meeting tonight. Give me a last.
Ed?
Uh, I want to commend Andrew, he's over there chit chatting, but I I've been able to go to almost every weekend, uh, football, it's like a football uh festival uh, when they're home games, and then he got the, got a kid making, making lemonade, and I don't know if you've ever purchased lemonade from that young man, he's a showman. Yeah, he's he's something else, but anyway, it's great to see the whole community come out or much of the community come out to watch those games. Kids are playing hard, uh, you can tell that the coaches have coached them up really well. I just have such a great time uh chit chatting with people and. I, of course, I have a nephew or two that are playing, so I I'm a little bit biased, but it's been great and Andrew, kudos to you. It's been a lot of fun going to those.
Thank you.
I'm also looking forward to your Oktoberfest, so. That's it, that's all.
Liz?
Um, one small thing that I keep forgetting to mention that Phil stopped in is the Route ninety sign that they took down. To do the sidewalk. Um, it's just laying next to the Methodist Church and I keep meaning, so I was hoping if I say it here, I will remember. Uh, then if I need to put that back up. Small thing, but.
No, no.
Just before the kids winter.
Bill, put the sign back up.
Um, and then the other uh was just mentioning, uh, you know, so we've been talking about budgets and just, you know, some of the constraints that residents have mentioned around. Um, you know, the their financial kind of strain. Um, I've wanted to make sure to do more with promoting a program that I've stumbled upon. Um, when I was doing some work on my own house, so uh Homer is part um. Because of our, we have a really large Homer Historic District, so I think there's almost a hundred and twenty houses in the village that. Fit within that district, so not everybody, um, but the there is a New York Historic Homeowner Tax Credit Program. Through the New York State Parks and so if you submit your proposal ahead of time. Um, and it's approved, uh, you get twenty percent back on the renovations that you're doing in your home. And so I figured that that's something there, a lot of folks who are, again, I found it because I was trying to figure out how to. Do my own renovations and when I talked to the woman at the office, she was like, I would be happy, you know. No one seems to know about this, there's not been that many applications and so um she's like, I'm happy to help do a private, you know, a. A special session to help, you know, homers um residents to know how to use this program, et cetera, but. I submitted and within about three or four weeks I got approval, so it wasn't like a really complicated process.
Liz, would you be willing to put a program on for that? Okay, we will work on that because. I know a a lot of other people that fall within that same.
Yeah. Exactly.
Parameters.
Yeah, um, and I think also businesses that are in the that are, there are multiple businesses who also are within that district. So um, wanted to clarify, it's not every resident, but at least, you know, we'll we'll find something else for for other folks, so. Yeah.
Elizabeth?
Um, as you mentioned, Doctor Fest is coming in two weeks, Andrew is still looking for volunteers who wanna help make it run smoothly. During the summer, he had a crew of uh young people working. With the rec program, they've all gone off to college and so if there are any people who are looking to volunteer. To help with costume judging, making sure the kids are lined up correctly for the parade. Uh, making sure they don't crush each other in the bounce house or putting out cider and donuts. Reach out to the rec director and um. We would love to have you.
That'd be great. Uh, I think it was posted online that the Halloween Parade uh, the yarding lead. Uh, lines up at the town hall. And then we'll go, we'll march down. So. Alright. What I have, one, uh, as Reed mentioned, I met the new county administrator, Mike Poncello. Uh, lovely gentleman and seems ready to dive into the things. That the the county needs and is also reaching out to us at the. Village and town level to see how we can work together, so I'm really excited about that. Second thing is, uh, you can see that you have, I emailed everybody our tentative budget schedule for this year. But I also put out hard copies for everybody to look at. Uh, if you would let me know. What? Your thoughts are on that, I've already gotten a a response from Elizabeth.
I think it looks great, I appreciate the roadmap for we're working here. And for the trustees and I'm available for the the main Saturday day from the back of the.
I think the answer is same here. Triple check, but yeah. That should be all time.
So we will look at, just so uh you know that the department heads have their one to five year plans due tomorrow. Uh, and then they will receive their budget worksheets from the treasurer. Uh, this is uh more aggressive than what's in the uh NITE COM budget calendar, but I wanted to be ahead of this. Uh, because I know we got some things ahead of us, so I will, and for those in the chief seats, I have extra copies. And we'll go from there. Alright. Questions from the media? Are anybody in the chief seats? Sydney?
Ed, I'm dead.
Okay, Jack? Alright, anybody else? John, I feel like you got shorted, I mean, you you came here and.
Can I make a question? I arrived at six, but you were already in proceedings.
We were, we started at five fifty nine. Because we have three members of our illustrious board here that have a uh session at eight o'clock. Uh, for the League of Women Voters and I need to get them home in time so they can participate in that. So I figured by the time I got done with the Pledge of Allegiance, it would be close enough to six.
Um, so what was the purpose of the public hearing on the little white church?
We were just reaffirming that we are going to de the Little White Church over to Center for the Arts. That was it.
Can I make a suggestion maybe in honor of John, that on our budget, we also submit to the Homer News, the public hearing about the budget?
You know what?
Just the kind of Portland standard.
We can, we can do that to the the Homer News too.
Okay.
So.
Well, one of the problems of the Homer News.
Since we know far enough.
Out every two weeks, so. I realize that I haven't really handled it ready, but I don't.
But for this particular one.
And I do get the Portland Standard, but uh. Those things.
Alright, um, one question, I'm sorry, I know we're short on time, but.
We're fine, we're we're doing okay.
The, I was here for the presentation, the attorney made um. Last uh meeting about the KFOs.
Yes.
Are there other law firms that do similar studies? And is it worth our while to look at other organizations? Uh, that might do similar uh types of services?
I have to my knowledge, and I also talked with him, it's today, Tuesday. Yesterday, Jerry Kane is the attorney.
Yeah.
I said, uh, can you give us a representative? List of municipalities in this area, the only one so far here. Is the city of Portland, was signed to Supreme Court. He has a number of them out the Finger Lakes Region Way. They seem to be coming a moving east. But um, right now, the only one in this area. That has signed an agreement is the city of Portland and to my knowledge, I know no one, no other law firm that is trying to use.
I thought it might be worth our while to trade a better rate if.
Well, our 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 rate is zero. The only thing they do is if something comes up and they do get a, if we do get an award, they get a percentage of it, that's how they offset it.
It's a contingent fee.
It's contingent. Yeah. Anybody else? Alright. I hate to do this, but. We need to go into executive session per New York State Public Officers Law. Article seven, section one oh five. Discussions regarding proposed, uh, no collective negotiations for labor law. And uh, especially regarding proposed or pending litigation.
Make a motion that goes to executive session, so into New York State Public Officers Law. Article seven, section one oh five. To discuss the legal treatment of the labor negotiations.
Started them.
Yeah.